Kimon.
All right, oops, sorry. Good evening. Today is Thursday, February 10th at 6:30 PM. This is the Olentangie School Board Education Regular Meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. Ms. Hatfield, please call the roll.
Dr. Dabberco?
Here.
Mr. Lester?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
And Dr. Weiss?
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Still moved.
For a second, please.
Second.
Any discussion on the agenda? All right, seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move into our only presentation item. This is from the Auditor of State, the Award with Distinction Presentation, Victoria Hubner, the Central Region Liaison for the Auditor of State, Keith Faber.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much for having me this evening. As mentioned, my name is Tori Hubner and I'm the Central Regional Liaison for the Auditor of State. I was not here in person last year, but I was here in 2020 before everything shut down. So I was like, oh, I was here last year. No, that was a few years ago. So it's my honor to be here again on behalf of Auditor Faber to present and send Olentangie local schools with the Auditor of State Award with Distinction. So our office audits nearly 6,000 entities throughout the state and only 3% to 5% of those entities are even eligible for this award. So that's less than 300 entities and even less achieve it. Our, the Award with Distinction is presented to those who meet the criteria for a clean audit, which includes preparing an annual comprehensive finance report and timely filings. This also means the audit report does not contain any findings for recovery, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, or ethical referrals. And additionally, in 2019, Auditor Faber came out with these stars program, which tests for sunshine law compliance in open meetings. The district has received four out of four stars, which is the highest in our system, and this is a new set of standards that monitors transparency in government by testing entities on sunshine law requirements and achieving additional stars for each best practice. So to reach four stars, the highest achievement, you have to have between five to seven best practices on top of being compliant with sunshine law. So I would like to thank the school board members, the superintendent, and all of the school employees that do their best to help in achieving accounting excellence, and especially your treasurer, Emily Hatfield, and her staff, who make sure that you receive this award year after year. So I will hand it over to Emily.
Thank you so much for this distinguished award. I had some notes, but I'm going to leave them down there and see if I can do this without them. But really just wanted to say thank you to our team. We have a team of 11 staff members, including myself, who work on the financials for the district. That includes everything from payroll to benefits to debt issuance to monthly reporting and our five-year forecasting and so on. It takes an entire team to make sure that we are working with staff on compliance issues, that they are turning in paperwork and the materials needed to meet these high standards. So I'm very proud of our team and all the efforts they give forward every day to make sure Olentangie remains, to have such a great audit outcome year after year. This is the sixth time that we've received this award since I have been in leadership with the district and we've received this award 10 consecutive years in a row. At this time, I would like to ask the members of my team to come forward. We would like to get a group photo with everyone and Mrs. Hubner. We're going to be over here at the Olentangie Schools Flourish here to the right of Mr. Dabberco, please. While they're making their way up, yes, thank you. So we have Assistant Treasurer, Missy Griffith, Susan Colson, Jennifer Glorioso, Amanda Burton, Don Alfater, Lori Zay, and Tammy Riley. Are there others with us? Okay. So we have a few other folks who could not be with us this evening, but we are excited to have the group with us tonight and we're going to take a quick photo. So please give us just a moment to do so. Thank you.
All right, so that's our only presentation item tonight. We'll move into the Board President's Report. I just have a few brief comments and then we'll get to the Superintendent's Report, which I think is what everyone's here to hear, not necessarily for me. In terms of committee updates, we don't have much this meeting. I think we'll have some more at the end of the month, but the Finance and Audit Committee is meeting on February 22nd and I believe Policy and Facilities have met recently and Mr. Dabberco, you went to the OEF meeting. Mindy, I didn't know if there's anything going on at DACC that you'd want to cover, but things are fine there. Are you still doing DACC?
I am.
Yes.
I am. There is a new program that they're introducing for seniors only after school. So students have to, don't have to do a two-year. I think there's five different offerings, so keep a lookout for that.
Terrific. So another item I wanted to cover just briefly is kind of what I'll call Board Engagement. You've been talking to Mr. Rafe and the other board members on ways that the board is engaging with the community. We have tried different things in the past through public participation or I remember when I first got on the board, we would get here a half an hour early and just meet with the public if they had things they want to talk about. So we're looking at different ways of engaging the community. I know Mr. Lester, Mr. Dabberco are doing office hours. So we're going to continue to experiment with different ways of engaging the community to hopefully have those to be more positive interactions, frankly. Mr. Rafe is doing a coffee chat on the 16th, which, next week, was that Wednesday next week? At Berlin High School. It's kind of an open house from 7:00 to 9:00. So I would encourage people to attend if you have things that you want to...
Berlin Room. Berlin Room.
Oh, Berlin Room. I'm sorry, not Berlin High School. So again, you know, we're always looking for different ways to make sure that we're engaging the community in the appropriate fashion in the most productive way we, the way we can. Finally, just as an update, Dr. Fede and his team, they've completed the process of updating the Literature Review Policy. We're going to have him come in and talk to us about what that new update policy looks like and what we should expect from that. So expect that on a future agenda in the near term. So with that, I will turn the meeting over to Mr. Rafe, the Superintendent's Report.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for coming out. Great to see everybody as usual. So a lot, obviously still a lot going on in the district. As I always like to do, start with some Living the Mission slides, just some good things going on. This is National School Counseling Week, so we have 48 counselors in our district, grades K through 12, that support our students in all their various academic and social emotional needs. So that's, I'm going to give a shout out to all of our, the 48 school counselors and Dr. Berens for helping supervise that program from the district level here during National School Counseling Week. So great job by our counselors all throughout the district. February 1st was the Lunar New Year, so we had elementary kids all across the district learning the significance of this holidays and their customs and traditions through crafts and other, other activities. So that was something fun going on. Obviously, everybody is well aware that a major winter storm, Landon, came to town and we ended up having to unfortunately close school for, for two days, Thursday and Friday, as everybody dug out. But we, our communications team decided to ask the community to send in pictures and photos of them enjoying some outside activity. Hopefully, some kids got out and cleaned sidewalks for their neighbors and did those kind of things. So that, that obviously was last weekend's behind us. Looks like weather's going to be okay for the next two weeks. Doesn't, doesn't appear that the weather team's going to have to be out early and often here for the next couple of weeks, which is, which is good. We are already entering hiring season here in Olentangie, so we're getting ready to start that for the 22-23 school year. Our Human Resources Team held an Intervention Specialist specific Hiring Day last week. We had 75 candidates. We expect around 15 positions for next school year where we're going to hire intervention specialists in the district. Obviously, our needs continue to grow in that area. So we're trying to get ahead of other districts, try to get the best candidates we can find. So we had 75 people in for interviews. I think we're going to bring back, we have a pool of about 35 or so that are now eligible to move on to building level interviews. And then we'll give an update here in the future about the rest of the hiring season. But I'm something I've always, having worked in other districts, this is something I'm really proud of. Our HR team gets out ahead of hiring season early. I've worked in other districts where we waited to hire until June and by then there's a lot of good candidates that are already taking jobs in other places. So, so that's a great thing. So Middle School 6, I actually drove by Middle School 6, which is obviously right next to Berlin High School the other day. It was interesting, the football or the, excuse me, the stadium stands are already up. The dugout block is, I was surprised to see the outside, some of the outside work's already been done. But according to Bruce Runyon, our architect, the grass is planted, so we're going to get two good full seasons of growing before the stadium grass is going to be used. So we're well ahead of the game here with, with the building of Middle School 6. Wanted to give you an update on, on some of the activities going on with Middle School 6. So we are gonna, our naming process actually starts tonight. We're gonna start tomorrow collecting input from parents in the community on suggestions for the name of the building. We'll run through that. I will give you some selections to choose from on March 10th. So we will have a name for our sixth middle school on March 10th. The following that process, we'll run a process to create the mascot and the colors for the schools. So again, we will do that same kind of process. We'll solicit input from parents and students and community members for that building mascot and colors and then winnow that down to suggestions that we will announce on April 21st. And outside of dealing with COVID protocols and the pandemic, this is probably the most difficult thing we deal with in our district, the dreaded R-word, redistricting. It is, we are going to, obviously, as we open new buildings, we have to, to redistrict and draw new attendance boundaries. So that will happen here in the late spring and we will announce those changes in the fall of 2022, probably early, early fall, August, September-ish, September, October-ish, September, October-ish. So the earlier the better. So, so I want to obviously give an update on our Health and Prevention Guidance, as Mr. O'Brien already mentioned, probably a reason a large number of people are in our crowd. So I want to bring us back just a second here to, to the idea that when we start, you know, back in, in March of 20, the, all the decisions were made for us. And, and the schools were closed down and that was the, what most difficult time we had. It was very difficult for our kids and our parents and our staff, the remote learning. We weren't prepared for it. We didn't know how long it was going to last. And, and that really put a, a real burden on, on our decision-making processes as we moved forward, because the last thing we ever wanted to do was go back to that type of structure with the remote learning. So that really has always been in the, the back of our minds of how do we maximize student learning? And we know we maximize student learning by having our kids in school with our teachers each and every day. And so, and, but we also wanted to do that by minimizing the risk for our students and staff, because again, if we had large numbers of, of cases or large numbers of quarantines, that was going to create situations where our kids couldn't be in school or potentially our staff couldn't be in school. So that's always been our driving question as we've tried to, to make all of these answers and, or make, excuse me, make all of the decisions as, as we've moved forward through that process. And, you know, I think I've been pretty, you know, I, when we started back in the first, first thing I announced to everybody was we're coming back full, full in. Masks were mandated in, in 2020, 2021, but I wanted us to be back full-time. And, and, and we decided to pull back and we stayed on hybrid for three quarters of the year. But, you know, I, I've really tried to keep pushing this envelope as best as I can to try to, again, meet our end goal of getting us back to as normal as possible. But we've obviously had a lot of different changes and spikes and different things that have happened. Finally, finally, I think I'm up here having good news to share, because our cases have simply fallen, the number of cases have simply fallen off of the, you see there in the graph, off the cliff. And this doesn't include the last week where we've been averaging for the past seven days about 12 cases a day in the district, which is significantly, when we first came back in January, we were looking at 250 cases a day throughout the district. So our cases have, have really declined rapidly here in the last few weeks. Our student attendance rate, that's something, obviously, we've continued to monitor very closely. The largest dip you see there was November 23rd, which was the day before Thanksgiving, which is typically a low attendance day for us anyways. But the January, the other three dips in that attendance cycle are the January 3rd, January 10th, and January 14th weeks, which again, those were our low points. But here as of February 2nd, the district's student attendance rate has risen back up to a more normal level of 94.9. You see here, these are two graphs. The top graph is our certified attendance for 2021. The bottom graph is 21-22. And attendance has been lower throughout this school year as compared to last school year when we were on our full hybrid model. But, but again, we're in, working towards a really good place with our certified staff attendance. The substitute fill rate was something we've always been concerned with, because again, if we, if we have large numbers of staff out, we were worried. A lot of districts had to close schools, had to go on alternative schedules. We didn't have to do that. Our staff really picked up the slack or really filled in all across the district with covering classes and splitting classes. And again, that's not ideal, but, but we made it through the worst of the COVID case rates and now we're back up to consistently being able to, to fill all of our classrooms. We've had 100% fill rate for the last week or so. So that is again trending in a positive direction. All of the local health guidance from the Ohio Department of Health and, and the, and Delaware Public Health District, they just, Delaware Public Health District just put out this new guidance, updated guidance with individual and family responsibilities, the health district's responsibilities and the, the school and, and facility responsibilities. And specifically, the school responsibilities fall with assisting the health district with outbreak investigation. So we're moving towards treating this more like it could be a flu outbreak or any other type of communicable disease outbreak, but assisting with outbreaks in particular potential areas, sending home students, employees who are sick, promoting frequent sanitizing and hand washing. So again, the school responsibilities, the health district does not speak to any specific school responsibilities with regarding... school responsibilities with regarding specific mitigation practices like masking. Today, at a press conference, Dr. Vanderhoff, the Ohio Department of Health Commissioner, said Ohioans need to make personal choices. Ohio Department of Health will continue to promote data and best practices to make, to help Ohioans make the best decisions they can. So, you know, as I say all the time, our, our mission is to facilitate maximum learning for every student. We started, and we know that kids learn best when they're in our classrooms with our teachers. We started the school year with the goal of requiring masks in preschool through eighth grade so that we could keep kids in school and staff in the classroom and keep them out of quarantine. But again, things have changed rapidly with regards to quarantines, things have changed rapidly with regards to our case counts. So, the board did enact a policy, eighty-four-fifty dot oh-one about the use of face masks and coverings. The board does have a, in that policy, it specifically requires masks for pre-K through eight. The board has also enacted a emergency powers resolution, which gives me the ability or the authority to suspend a policy like eighty-four-fifty. And as opposed to us going through a cumbersome process of two readings, revise the policy, present a new policy, revise a policy, because at this time, I am recommending that we, that I intend to suspend board policy eighty-four-fifty, and that face masks will no longer be required, but they are permitted but no longer required beginning Monday, February fourteenth. So, the masks are still required on bus transportation per the federal executive order. There's nothing we can do about this at that time, so we're gonna ask for compliance with that request. You know, we continue to come back to this driving question of how we maximize student learning while we're minimizing the risk for our students and staff. We'll continue to monitor all of our data. I don't anticipate that, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm very positive and hopeful that we are gonna continue to trend down in this, in, in this positive manner. You know, I allowed myself to be kinda lulled, or I, I thought, you know, once I had to, you know, this, this is a heavy decision to, to make, and it's a difficult decision, because not everybody's gonna be happy with this decision. Obviously, a lot of people are gonna be happy with this decision, but there will be people, and we need a little bit of time to make sure people can process. If there are people that want to have additional PPE available, we will provide additional PPE for those who still want additional PPE and, I'm having a difficult time being distracted with people talking, Mr. O'Brien, so.
Okay.
So, it's my teacher moment where I pause, so.
I gotta turn my hearing aids up, 'cause I can't.
Yeah, it's all right. It's, yeah. My wife says I can't hear, but I can hear some, I can hear that when people are interrupting me. The, you know, but I, I allowed myself to, to somehow feel like, once I made this decision, the eight-thousand-pound weight of making this decision would be lifted, and things would get better and get easier. But immediately within, as we presented this information to our principals in a Tuesday meeting, the principal started firing questions, what about, what about, what about, what about, all the, some of the other things that we've done with regards to visitors and class parties and end-of-year activities. We need to, we need a moment to examine all of those things we're doing. So I'm gonna ask respectfully that people give us a moment to examine all of those things that we're doing and figure out what's best moving forward, so that we can come back to that driving question of how do we continue to maximize student learning while minimizing the risks for students and staff? Because the last thing we wanna do is all of a sudden go in the other direction. Things are going in a great positive direction, but it's really important that we still be a little bit cautious here and be vigilant about what we're doing and why we're doing it. So there, our goal is to have everything be as it has always been with visitors in our buildings, class parties, clapouts, end-of-year activities, normal graduation, and whatever the activities are. But we need some time to process it, and, and there's still a lot going on that, that we have to, to process through. So I'm gonna again ask for people to just be respectful on that as we process those decisions. I anticipate, you know, in the next couple of weeks, we have a board meeting at the end of February, I'll be able to have an update on where we are with all of those things. I'll have, and then obviously, we have two board meetings in March as we head towards the, the fourth quarter and, and the end of the year. But again, we want everything to be normal, and I do believe, given the direction Dr. Vanderhoff said today, and where the Delaware Health District is going, all of the indicators are pointing towards all of the, the CDC and, and all of the other guidance changing to changing the pandemic to an endemic that we're just gonna, gonna live with, which is obviously where we've all wanted to be for, for a long time. Our, our COVID communication is obviously with all of that is changing. We will still assist the local health departments with contact tracing, but essentially, we're not doing the same types of contact tracing. The responsibility, if somebody tests positive with COVID, they should tell the people they have contact with. We're not going through that. So they, Ohio Department of Health and Delaware Health District has instructed us that may, we may discontinue universal contact tracing, so we're not, you know, obviously is concerned about kids having to be out of school because they're considered a contact. The, you see there, the ODH, that quick spread of Omicron, and it's just basically made it impossible to do all that. Our daily building letters with case counts will no longer be sent beginning Monday, February fourteenth, so I think that will help, and our nurses will continue to monitor illness in our schools and work with families to address concerns just like normally. So, I'll pause there with any, any questions on where we're at with the COVID update?
Any questions?
So, I've got a couple of questions. So, first of all, I think I speak for everybody in the community when, when I say that COVID has been an extremely difficult thing for everyone. It has been something that none of us had any experience with, and it was extremely unpredictable. And so that made it, it difficult on all of us to understand what to do, to, to understand how to process it. And you and the staff have been in an extremely unenviable position of trying to make decisions that affect the entire community in the face of that lack of information. So I, first of all, wanna commend you for the work that has gone through all of this and the time and attention to try to get it right, to come at it from a place of science and looking at the figures and understanding it, and coming at it from a, a position of good faith, right? And that, and that's really what this is all about. And I know there's a lot of pressure, there's a lot of views in the community, but you've really taken your time and been very thoughtful about this. That's not my question.
Thank you.
But that's a belief. But I, I do wanna commend you, because it, it is a very weighty burden, and I know that, I know that everybody feels it. We've seen a lot in the news about people, about different jurisdictions changing their COVID requirements, and two of the things that they really point to are low spread in the community and high vaccination rates. And I did a little bit of research, and Delaware County is the highest vaccinated county in the state, by about ten percentage points over anybody else. Can you talk a little bit about how the vaccination rates have helped and, and what we've seen in the high schools, where vaccines were available all year, and how that's contributed to the, the numbers that we've seen in the high schools relative to the others?
Yeah, so we started school year, our high school vaccination rate was over seventy percent, it's pushed upwards of ninety. The, it has, that, I think that's been a positive for us. You know, and I look at, one of the things I struggled with, and you know, again, I get a lot of, I get a lot of feedback, a lot of communication from a lot of people and a lot of different issues, and, and all of that, and all of that causes me to start having an argument with myself. And ultimately, because we wanna know, what's the number? What, what, how many cases do we have to get to? What is it gonna be, what's the trigger that's gonna make you change your mind about all these things? And, and, and I can always justify what we were doing, because I think it made sense. When we started the school year with high school kids not wearing masks, because we had high, high vaccination rates, and we weren't worried about co, quarantines, that made sense. And then when the, the quarantine, or the vaccination became available for five to eleven-year-olds, and I wanted to give enough time for that, people to have an opportunity to get the vaccination, and then that took us through, you know, November, December, and I had fully intended to take the masks off in January, except for then we hit Omicron, and it made no sense to take the masks off at that moment to me, because we're in the highest case count we had. I think, you know, if you look at our case data by grade level, there's really no discernible difference between the high school cases as a percentage of the population and the elementary, middle school. So I really, but what, what's the reason for that? Because as I've said to you guys repeatedly, I could put all kinds of data up there, and if you, whatever your rhetoric, whatever your, your narrative is, whatever you wanna make that data believe, you can make that data believe it. High school numbers are low because they're high vaccinations. Elementary numbers are, are where they are because they're wearing masks. I don't know. I just know at this point in time, I'm comfortable making this decision to move forward, because I believe our case numbers, the community spread is low, we have people vaccinated, honestly, I have a number of people that probably have already had COVID and may not know it or not. I mean, that, that, you know, I, I believe our community has reached that herd immunity level where this particular mitigation strategy isn't required. If some, you know, like, you know, again, I've said this previously, our board, we didn't have a board policy on wearing a mask. We wouldn't let kids wear a mask in school, per se, unless there was a specific medical reason, because wholesale, you wouldn't want kids not being, not being able to identify kids. I'm a, you know, former high school principal, I wanna know who, who's in my building. You know, so, we're gonna, now, because of where we are, we're gonna permit people to wear masks. I think it will be a low number, but, you know, at least you know, you know who those kids are. You know, a lot of districts that changed their mask policy made bold, just statements about how we're not going to treat kids who wear masks differently, or we're not, we're gonna make sure the kids whom wear masks don't get bullied and those kind of things. I, I don't think I need to make that statement, because I have faith in the people in our community that they, they respect whatever personal choice people are making. If that's what they wanna do, then that's fine. So we didn't, like, a lot of the communications that came out from other districts that have changed their mask policies have, have made those kind of statements. I just, we, we talked about that, I don't, it's pretty obvious. We don't need to pick on each other or be mean to each other. Maybe we can come, come back to a time where we can actually respect, be respectful and be nice to each other, which would be my hope. I don't even know if I answered your question, Mr. Lesser.
Right, that's, thank you. So, second quick question is, I think, as we look at this, that one of the things that we've seen with COVID is it's unpredictable, and, and we don't know what is on the horizon. And I think that leaves a lot of people uneasy, especially as we saw the Omicron wave come up so quickly and, and die down. So, can you talk just a little bit about the district's plans to continue to monitor this as we're going along and, you know, evaluate things as, as we see day-to-day?
Yeah, it, you know, we're gonna, it's gonna take, you know, like, like it would have, I didn't necessarily say this, per se, but, you know, it was, you know, the fear is, we started back at the beginning of this school year about what would it take for us to have to shut down and go remote? And I said publicly and, and privately to a lot of, there's no way that's happening. It's just not. We're not going, we're not, I mean, we're gonna figure out, and we did, figured out a way to get through it. We covered, we, we, you know, covered each other, picked up classes, everybody did, you know, two and three jobs, and, and we never had to shut down. But as Mr. O'Brien mentioned at the last meeting, bus drivers rose to the occasion. I, I, I know the fact that I've not made quick decisions frustrates some people, but I feel like I've been very calculated, very diligent, very, you know, slow to make some decisions until I really felt it was the decision I needed to make. And I would tell you, I'd tell you, as long as it took me to take them off, it's gonna take just as long to put them back on, so. Because people have that, people, you know, again, if you're, that, if, you know, it, it's just gonna take us a real, you know, it would, it would more than likely take an order from somebody else. I, I, you know, I, I just don't have the appetite to do that.
Anything else? Nope.
Finally, our action items. We have a new head football coach. I just highlighted just 'cause it's kind of a standalone of one of our supplemental contracts. Curtis W., it stands for Wade Bartholomew, who's Coach Bart, is coming to Olentangie High School to be the football coach. Been very successful. Bloom Carroll had them in the final four of the playoffs multiple times in the last few seasons, so the, the team at Olentangie's very, very excited to welcome Coach Bartholomew to Olentangie High School. We are approving a fairly large purchase with DCTS for replacement classroom devices. These are interactive displays, wall and mobile mounts, three-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand dollars. You know, as we open new buildings, you know, Berlin High School opened, and we put the most, as, as most up-to-date technology in those buildings. We always wanna come back and make sure all of our buildings have the most up-to-date technology, so we have a, a plan to do that as part of our permanent improvement plan, as part of our overall technology plan. Mr. Sexton, I really appreciate all of his work and what he's done in the time he's been here as our technology director. We've got a more robust, more reliable, more redundant network that is, I mean, there were times where, you know, there could be an accident somewhere in the county and it would knock out our internet, and it would be down for days. Can't do school anymore without, without that. And he has a great plan for the replacement of devices. Teachers who are getting these devices actually had to write a grant, state how they were gonna use the device, and commit to professional development, so they can use the device properly to maximize learning. And that, that's something new that we just started doing, 'cause we're not just throwing two-thousand-dollar pieces of equipment in somebody's room so it can collect dust. So I'm really proud of the staff that is stepping forward to do that, and then also our technology team for the work they're doing there. We have four easements on the agenda, and obviously, the county commissioners, these are all with Delaware County. Two of them at Berlin High School, they're gonna be putting a roundabout, actually, it's a peanut roundabout, at Piatt Road and Berlin Station Road. There's a new development going on the northwest corner of where Piatt ends at, at Berlin Station, and so that whole area's getting redone, and they need to use some of our land, so we are gonna give them an easement for that. So those are the two for Berlin High School, and there are two, ones, ones related to Liberty High School and Indian Springs High School, and those are for a bike path and the system that is all part of the area over there. I am gonna pull out items, the last two items, I think it's F and G. Mr. Dabberco is gonna abstain from those items, because he was involved in the library project over there, and we wanna be completely transparent with any involvement. But bringing more bike paths is a good thing to the community, so we're happy to partner with Delaware County on that. And then there's our next round of important dates. We have, obviously, the second event in our, our One Community Conference Series. I have a coffee chat here coming up, I appreciate that shout-out. Our staff professional development day is next Friday, so kids are not in school, we have a four-day weekend for kids for the professional development day on the eighteenth and President's Day on the twenty-first, and our next board meetings, quickly, two weeks away, twenty-fourth.
All right, any, any additional questions for Mr. Rafe? No? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next agenda item is the treasurer's report, Mrs. Haffield?
Thank you. We don't have any additional items after our presentation with Ms. Hubner, so we will bring forward our financial reports and other information for you at our next meeting.
Thank you. All right, let's go to public participation.
So we have several submissions this evening for public participation. So I would like to read the highlights of the policy in regards to public participation. Public participation, participation, excuse me, is the community's time to present ideas, issues, or concerns to the Board of Education. Public participation is not a dialogue or discussion. It is an opportunity to present any ideas to the Board of Education in a public forum. The Board of Education will respectfully listen to the comments. Public participation will last for a maximum of thirty minutes. Each participant is limited to three minutes to address the Board of Education. Participants will not be able to cede their three minutes to another person, and participants must state their full name and address when stepping to the podium. Public participation procedures are established by the Board of Education Policy zero-one-six-nine-point-one. This policy was revised by the Board of Education on October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one. The policy in its entirety is available at the district website as an exhibit to the October twelfth meeting minutes and also in the board policy section. So we have the slips that were filled out, we have grouped them by topic, but we have everyone here. So I will begin by calling the first slip in that order. We have Mr. Mike Coleman, I believe- We have Mr. Mike Coleman, I believe I'm pronouncing your name correctly, sir? If you would, please step to the podium and state your name and address and I will start the three-minute timer.
Hello, my name's Mike Coleman at 8830 Linksway Drive in Powell. Can you all hear me okay? Okay. Well, hello, school board officers and members. And I want to begin by thanking you for your good work and service to the community. I'm an eight-year Navy veteran with many of those years working on the flight deck of an aircraft carrier fixing airplanes. And I was a very good sailor. And I like to think that I'm an even better veteran. Not long ago, I became interested in what's happening within my school district here. And there's many ways to do that. I chose to just simply go to the school board website. You guys have a wonderful website, got a bunch of good information out there. There I read and viewed letters and videos that have been officially presented to the school board from concerned parents. Some parents of this community seem at present to be enraged by CRT and certain select reading materials that are available, inappropriate age reading materials that are available to their children. On these matters, these parents have presented to the school board, what these, what they have presented is not difficult to understand. They've been consistent, persistent, and this has been going on for many, many months. They are very concerned and rightfully so, parents. They weren't so concerned two years ago. It seemed like what was happening in the school district here was your usual customary and predictable interrelations between school administrators and the parents. Now, I dug a little bit deeper and I saw that there is a advocacy committee on the school board that you guys have developed.
One moment, sir, or one minute.
But yet I could not find really any real student parent advocacy taking place, at least it's not available on the website. So what are these parents to do besides coming here? And they just keep having to repeat and repeat and repeat things that they have said earlier. I have a simple message for the boards and the parents. For where I sit, the school board is dancing with fire. Let me explain. Prior to two years ago, parent-student and school administration relationships were usual and customary, not too much out of the ordinary. Over recent months, much, much has changed. From the children's parents and seeing, hearing about CRT and access to inappropriate reading materials in the schools, these are just a couple of the many concerns they have repeatedly mentioned to you. Parents have communicated they are seeing a new type of trauma being experienced by their kids. This is changing their children. Underlying these concerns is what's, underlying these concerns are the following. What learning, what learning is now taking place in place of CRT and these other things that are going on? Has the school board abdicated their responsibility to manage their learning topics over some other unknown authority? Who approves CRT and is it required by law to even be here? Is it required by law to be here? Just two more simple things. Is the school really ready, looking out for our children's welfare? My final message is this, you guys are dancing with fire, you're facing a major lawsuit and it's right at your doorsteps.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I, I'm sorry if you can't hear me, then I can't call the next participant, please. May I have Ms. Robin, I believe it's House? Thank you. Did I pronounce your name right, ma'am?
Hughes.
Hughes, I apologize for that. Would you please state your name and address for the record and I will start your time?
My name is Robin Hughes, 8553 Ponvy Lane. Good evening, board, thank you. First off, I just want to say kudos for doing a student well-being questionnaire. That is a topic that is very important to all of us parents right now, of how our kids are doing emotionally, socially. And thank you for taking the time to ask our students questions about that. However, I felt that given the current topics of masks in schools, we missed an opportunity with this questionnaire to ask our kids how the masks are making them feel. Do they feel safer? Do they feel harder to communicate? But what is their opinion on the mask? Because it is a major part of their social, emotional well-being today. So, so hopefully we can find another way to ask our kids. Obviously now, turn of events, it's not as critical, but in some ways, it would still be good to know how it made them feel in case we have to go back down that path. So just, thank you.
May I have Ms. Janine King, please? If you would, please state your name and address for the record and I'll start the time.
Janine King, 4584 Grayson Drive, Powell, Ohio. I'll admit that before last week, I never read the student handbook because I trusted you. And I spent last weekend reading it and it's actually quite good. Page eight of the Code of Conduct. The board believes that students should assume responsibility for their behavior and the consequences of their actions. The board has a zero tolerance of violent, disruptive, or inappropriate behavior by its students. Violation of the Code of Contact may result in verbal or written warning or reprimand, parental contact or conference, potentially detention and so forth. Page nine, bullet number four, students shall not use obscene, vulgar, profane, or discriminatory language, make inappropriate gestures, actions, or possess vulgar materials. Page 11, bullet number 17, students are not to hold hands, hug, kiss, or demonstrate any other acts of affection. Page 18, the dress code. Clothing must cover areas from one armpit across to the other armpit, down to the thighs. Tops must have shoulder straps, shorts and skirts must reach mid-thigh. Any clothing or statement that may cause discriminatory environment is prohibited. This is all good and speaks to the character that we want to instill into the kids who graduate from Olentangie. This is good stuff that allows our kids to get jobs and succeed in the world. Test scores are important, yes, but they do not set the bar for achievement in life, character, good ideas, hard work, and ethics. It's what drives a child to succeed. Why are we not holding teachers to these same standards? You ask me time and time again, or you tell me you're going to have professional development to resolve some of these issues with the crap materials that are being brought to our kids. I'll tell you what, you can save a whole lot of money by just giving them the student handbook and saying, follow this, like we asked the kids to follow this. As early as a week ago, my daughter came home telling me that she watched a video in art class called "Ape Shit" in her classroom in honor of Black History Month. Isn't there a better choice to honor our black brothers and sisters versus one that says things like, I'm not going to say it because your son's back there, F, S, bitch number of times, get off my dick, roll some weed, sip in my favorite alcoholic alcohol got me so lit, not to mention the images which I have here, which definitely don't support the dress code. I've read to you other books, I know other parents have too. Why are we continuing to let this in our classrooms? Teachers have signs like this outside their classrooms, safe space. This is a political lobbying organization. This is not the sign that should be there. I was told by a member of the Parent Diversity Network that my white Catholic boy had a place there. Guess what? Not in that classroom. He does not have a place, it is not a safe space for him. Why don't we get rid of all of this? Shouldn't every, every space in every school, every room be safe for every single child? Regardless of what they look like, their sexual orientation, their gender, anything? It should be a safe space. Why do we have to label it and then create lines of demarcation? That's, I'm sorry, but I don't agree. And I think that you should do better, Olentangie.
Mr. Charles Grob, please? Mr. Charles Grob, please? If you would, please state your name and address for the record and I will start your time. Thank you.
Charles Grob, 4673 Normandy Drive. Olentangie Local School District, leadership is not putting our children first. At the last school board meeting of 2021, I called out the differences of the books that our children are supposed to be reading and the books they're actually reading. I got no response from the board or the superintendent, which is funny because tonight you guys are claiming how you want to be more engaging. Maybe you could start with actually emailing parents back. I escalated my issue of a 300-page book containing 250 cuss words, including 40 F-bombs, being read in middle school to the superintendent again. His response was, and I quote, "I wouldn't have a problem with my kids reading this book. We sent home a permission slip and some parents would find it okay. So that's the standard. As long as some parents find it okay, it doesn't matter who it offends, doesn't matter what it is." Got it and noted, sir. Well, I guess I'm one of those weird radical fringe parents who want to still, who want my kids to still have some innocence while they are young. And just so we are clear, I do not find it okay. I also don't find it okay for the board treasurer to lie straight to my face about Board Policy 0169.1, saying that you have to be here before the meeting to actually speak in public. It doesn't exist. You lied to my face, not even one sorry from you, not one sorry from this board, not one. Odd that you were rewarded today for having the sunshine award, right, for open policy? I find that odd because you know what you guys did last board meeting? You had a conversation amongst yourselves about how you wouldn't let me speak in front of the board because you knew what I was going to speak about. You knew that I was going to come down on you for allowing garbage books to be read to our children.
One minute, excuse me.
I'm requesting the board to actually do something. I'm looking for disciplinary action against our superintendent. I'm looking for disciplinary action against Carla Baker and the teacher Caitlin Baker for allowing this book to be introduced and read in a children's classroom. Next, I'll read you some passages from the book that the superintendent thinks okay for teachers, or thinks is okay, and so do you guys. I want you to keep in mind, as somebody else has read tonight, the book has very, the district has very strict rules against middle school children saying or writing these same words. Law enforcement has very strict rules against these same behaviors. And ask yourself if it makes sense for our children to read and learn about them in the classroom. Meth, only white people do that shit. Fuck you, man, no fuck you, Quinn. Man, that shit could have been laced with crack or fucking Drano. Another part of my Friday night routine was always swiping a flask full of mom's bourbon.
That's three minutes, please.
We got to get our drink on to get our party on. Weekend warriors for life.
May I, please, excuse me, I need to conduct the rest of the meeting. Thank you. May I please have Amy Hansen join us at the podium?
You got to tell her stuff.
Thank you.
I'm Amy Hansen, I live at 7661 Livia Drive. I want to start by thanking the school board, for sure. I am a junior at Olentangie Orange High School. And honestly, I came here to talk about my school and how much I love it. Because I feel accepted at my school. I came out the summer before freshman year and I was scared to go into high school. I didn't know how I'd be accepted in there. But when I walked in, I saw these safe space signs on the doors, I saw pride flags in rooms, I saw advertisements for the GSA. I felt like I truly belonged there. Most importantly, I saw gay students everywhere, people with pride pins and pride shirts. I felt like I truly belonged somewhere. Teachers supported me. And as I've been in high school, so many of my friends have come out. At this point, most of my friends are not straight. If I have to guess, I'd say about a third of the school isn't straight. But the thing is, it disappoints me, a lot of my friends can't come out to their parents because they're homophobic. I have so many friends that are closeted because their parents are homophobic. I know people personally who have gone to conversion therapy, who have been kicked out of their homes and have nowhere to live because their parents won't accept them. And I know for a fact that a lot of the people listening here agree with these things. And for that, I say shame on you. Shame on you for not being able to care for your own child. Because gay people exist. They've always existed for thousands and thousands of years. This goes back to ancient Egypt, ancient China, Native Americans. You're not getting rid of us ever. So you better learn to accept us or just shut up. I don't care how many books you banned, how many safe spaces you banned, we're not going anywhere. Gay people exist, black people exist, trans people exist. And you're not going to get rid of us. And I have to say, I'm speaking as a student here. I want the school board to listen to students, not parents. Because students, students are the ones going to the school. Students are the ones learning all of this. And you know, we're okay learning about this stuff. We really are. We're good with learning about gay people and black people and black history. You know, and right now, I'm reading Invisible Man, a book about racism in America. And it is a good educational book that I think everyone in here should read. I think we all could learn something. So I just want to let you know that no matter what you do, we're going to be gay, we're going to be black, we're going to be trans. There's nothing you can do about that. Thank you.
May I please have Monica Knight join us at the podium? If you would, please state your name and address for the record and then I'll begin your time.
Hi, I'm Monica Knight, 9105 Misty Dawn Drive.
Thank you.
Okay, so I had to do some editing. I am grateful that the mask mandate is no more. I worry though that this mandate may come and go as numbers may go up again and as the health department starts recommending again. COVID is not going anywhere. It's not just going to be cold and flu season anymore, it's going to be cold, flu, and COVID season. I want to prevent and give my perspective on not going down the mask mandate path again. We've been told by the district that it's deciding their policies on masks by the health department and the CDC recommendations. Well, let's consider the source. During the last two years, our mask usage recommendation and education by the CDC and specifically Dr. Anthony Fauci were, first of all, masks won't be needed. Then it was wear a surgical or cloth mask. Then it was get vaccinated and you won't even need a mask and you won't get the virus. Then it was if vaccinated, you still need a mask and you can still pass the virus to others. Then it was wear two masks. And currently, it's only N95 and K95 masks are the only thing that can fully protect you because they're airborne masks. And this is an airborne virus, which we've known all along. These are the people we're taking recommendations from. As educated people, let's just think about these situations logically. You all are wonderful, educated people. I'm leaving a lot out because the mandate got better, so I'm so excited. But I want to close with this because there are going to be a lot of parents, a lot of staff, a lot of people that are going to be upset with the reversal of this mask mandate. So I'm going to close with this. I'm a brain cancer patient. Call me a survivor right now, I'm still here. When I'm on chemo, sometimes my white blood cells are less than one, which make me super high risk to contract any bacterial infections or viruses. Thank you. When I am that at risk, I choose to wear a mask when I'm out in public. I'll protect myself, but I do not expect others to mask up for me. Just as such, if parents of kiddos still want to wear masks, if teachers still want to wear masks, please feel free, but never again demand that my children mask for you. Given all of the inaccuracies and inconsistencies of these government agencies, these decisions need to be left to the parents. Thank you for getting rid of this mask mandate.
Cheryl Everett, please? I don't believe I pronounced that correctly. Is it Everett?
Everett.
Oh, thank you. I will begin your time once you state your name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is Cheryl Everett and I'm at 5255 Loudoun Drive here in, right off the side of the road there. So I want to start out by saying I have a first grader in our district right now who, when I found out about having to put a mask back on him, I had told him at the end of the year, his kindergarten year, that you will never have to wear this again. And I stuck to that promise. He has not put a mask on his face since. And, you know, it's hard when, as a mom, as a parent, you think you know what's best for your kids. And... And I would never want to do something to hurt my child. And I gave him a choice. I said, you know what? If, if you're gonna feel so bullied and out of place for not having a mask on and you want to wear it, you can. You want to be allowed to go play with a friend down the street only if you have a mask on? You know, they're, they're, they're kids. They're kids. And you're just gonna tell them what to do. And they're gonna do it because they want to go to school. They want to spend time with their friends. I have another son who's gonna be starting kindergarten this year. I don't even know what the kindergarten looks like. I didn't get to experience that with my first. I didn't see his desk or his cubby or get to bring him lunch or any of those things. I saw his teacher through a TV screen. That was my experience and a lot of parents' experiences. You know what I am? I am a ICU nurse at Ohio State. And I have been busting my ass for two years against this. And you put shit on your face when you have a beard on or when you have, you're not properly fitted for it. You know what I have to go through to make sure that my mask is safe for me to be exposed to this virus? You have any idea what nurses are actually wearing?
One minute.
In a hospital? Wake up. Take the stuff off your face. It doesn't work. And I'm, excuse me, can't hear. I want to know, as the board, what are you gonna do for our children in the future when they have speech problems? Social awkwardness or whatever you want to call it, like they can't mentally process taking the mask off. Oh my God, we have to take it off now. Oh, but they're, you know, they're, they're resilient. They'll figure it out. No, it's normal for them now. We have made this normal for them. And you want to talk about bullying and being disrespectful? When I have friends with small children asking to be separated on a bus because their kids don't have a mask on? You're gonna separate our kids on a bus? And it gets reported? And you know what? I finally get a phone call because of a situation that had to get so bad, so bad.
Last three minutes, please.
It's sad and disappointing. And we need to do better.
That was our last participant that signed up for the evening. Thank you.
All right, uh, we'll now move to item ten, superintendent action items. So Mr. Rafe, would you present items A through E, I believe?
Yes, thank you, sir. I'd like to present superintendent action items A through E for approval.
Do you have a motion, please?
Second. Mr. Lester motion, do we have a second?
Thank you.
Do we get a second?
I'll second. Thank you.
Ms. Patrick second. Any discussion item, any discussion on items A through E?
No.
Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. DeBriko?
Yes.
Excuse me, Dr. DeBriko. Uh, Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then I'll present superintendent action items F and G for approval.
Okay, do you have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion on items F and G? All right, seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. DeBriko?
Epstein.
Thank you. Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. All right, I'll now entertain a motion, um, to go into an executive session pursuant to a higher revised code, one two two dot two two, G five, for matters required to be kept confidential by state and federal law. Um, could I have a motion, please? Mr. DeBriko? Code, and second, please?
Second.
Second, all right. Any discussion on going into executive session? What I gotta say is we will not be taking action when we return, so we will just return in adjourn. So, uh, please call the roll, Ms. Haffield.
Dr. DeBriko?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. Again, our next meeting is February twenty-fourth.
Does anyone have another input?
I have it.
Pass that down, please.
Okay.
All right, so I'll, we're good? Okay, Elet, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Second, please. All right. Okay, any discussion about adjourning? All right, please call the roll.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Dr. DeBriko?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.